All right, good to go.
We all set? Okay, uh, like to call this board meeting to order, please. First of all, welcome. I know it's still virtual and hopefully one of these days soon we'll be able to see you person to person. But at this point, I would like to ask Mrs. Slunt, our business administrator, to call the roll, please.
Dr. Cordelino?
Here.
Mr. Daughtry?
Here.
Mrs. Fano?
Here.
Dr. Modra?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Mr. Rafford?
Here.
Ms. Duckerman?
Here.
Mr. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Grau?
Here. Pledge of allegiance, please. If you'd like to stand at home, that's up to you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Open public meetings notice, Mrs. Slunt, please.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of the Act, the Montville Township Board of Education provided a public notice of this meeting, which included the time, date, and location that was posted at the Montville Township Municipal Building, all Montville Township public schools, the Montville Public Library, the Montville Township Board of Education Administrative Office Building, the district website, and advertised in the Daily Record, the board's official newspaper, on July 23rd, 2020.
Thank you, Mrs. Slunt. We don't have any high school student representatives here. The, I'm sure why most of you joined us this evening is to look, have an update on the reopening plan. On August 8th, the Board of Education adopted unanimously a plan that was submitted to the Department of Education. It was approved. Our superintendent has been working with the, her administration. And at this point, I would like to introduce Dr. Rovatar to each of you because she has a brief PowerPoint presentation because some things have changed since the plan was submitted on August 8th. So please, after the conclusion of the plan, we'll entertain questions from board members. And then we will open it up to the public at that time. I'll then have a statement, depending upon how many people we have and so on and so forth. Dr. Rovatar?
Okay, uh, before, good evening. Uh, before we, before I, uh, give a very brief PowerPoint, uh, on some of the changes to the plan, I did want to note that the board has an addendum that they'll be addressing this evening on the agenda, L4, for adjustments and stipends. There are a number of positions, and I'm not going to read the entire list, uh, but they do include, um, some extracurricular positions at Lazar and at the high school, marching band, choral director, grade level leaders, class advisors, FBI, DECA, forensics, history club, the honor societies. Um, it's, it's a pretty extensive list, so that is on the agenda for board action to approve those appointments tonight. I know that there were some questions out there. Okay, let me share my screen so that, um, I can share the PowerPoint with you. Okay, uh, so, um, we did have parents, uh, complete our return to school survey, and I know parents have been curious as to how that turned out. Um, I, there really wasn't room on this screen to, uh, provide a, a total column, but the total number of students at this point.
It's not showing.
It's not showing?
Can you see your screen?
All right, let me get out of that, hold on.
This could be a very, very short PowerPoint.
No, 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 no. Okay, now, can I? Sorry, technical difficulty.
Can I, uh, jump in?
Four.
Yep.
How many?
Four hands.
Forty-nine? Forty? Forty-four?
Oh.
Yes.
Huh?
Four hands right now.
Hmm?
You have four hands.
Oh, what's that?
Sorry for the delay. I thought I had this all queued up. That's yours. I don't.
Oh, yeah.
Here, Renee.
Thank you. Okay, sorry for the delay. All right, so, um, the parent survey data, as I was indicating, the total number of, uh, students that were requested for full-time remote is 1,015. Uh, you can see the breakdown there, uh, by grade level. And then in the far right column is the total enrollment for those grade levels. I will be posting this, uh, PowerPoint on the website, uh, after the meeting tonight, so, um, but, so the information is there for, for parents who want to review that. Uh, so our, um, our plan was, as Mr. Grau indicated, approved by the Board of Education on August 8th. We did receive communication from the Executive County Superintendent indicating that our plan did address all of the NJ DOE, uh, review criteria. What we did not have available to us on August 8th was the total number of staff requesting accommodations and the total number of students requesting full-time remote instruction. So that has, um, kind of put us in a little bit of a different place. Uh, so we are recommending this evening, uh, that the board take action to adopt a revised plan that, um, presents some changes. The changes to the plan at the middle and high school level. Um, combined in those two schools, we have 19 teachers who have requested accommodations, meaning that, you know, there is some reason why they are not able to come in to teach in the building. In order to facilitate teachers teaching from home, the district needs to provide a teacher in that classroom to supervise the in-person students. At the present time, we have not been able to secure an adequate number of substitute teachers to handle all of these assignments while still having an adequate number of substitutes available for the regular daily absences that we know will occur if school is open for in-person instruction. So what we are recommending this evening is that the middle and high school will operate on a full-time remote basis for all students. We are saying that that will take place from our opening day on September 8th through October 30th. But if we can acquire, uh, sufficient subs or, uh, replacement teachers sooner than October 30th, we can, uh, return to in-person instruction. Uh, if, you know, we're still in that mode, what we're searching for people, we'll review the status by October 15th. But it's really an issue of having the substitute personnel to cover the in-person classes to allow us to accommodate those teachers, uh, to teach remotely. Um, we have advertised for replacement teachers and we're actively accepting applications. Here's our website, please, uh, you know, if you're at home and you would like to, uh, work as a substitute, our daily rate is a hundred dollars a day. The requirements to become a certified substitute are, uh, 60 college credits uh, from an accredited institution or a New Jersey teaching certificate. I need to go back. Okay, um, oh, the, um, the plan at the elementary schools has shifted. Uh, we will still be doing in-person instruction at the elementary schools on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, virtual Wednesday, just as we had originally planned. The change at the elementary school really deals with our full-time remote students. Originally, we had planned to create separate cross-district classes for those students. Due to the high number of students that requested full-time remote, the logistics of that do not work. So, um, what we are proposing, uh, now is that the elementary classes in each one of our five elementary schools will be configured on a homeschool basis. There will be no cross-district full-time remote classes. Um, the full-time remote students will stream into their assigned in-person class, and we plan to have two adults assigned to the classroom to facilitate instruction so that the teacher, single-handedly, will not have to manage the, uh, in-person students and the full-time remote students. We'll, we'll have, uh, an additional, uh, person, whether it's, uh, an additional teacher, a paraprofessional, um, in the room to assist with that process. In terms of high school athletics, as long as the NJ, NJ SIAA does not cancel the fall sports season, our intent is to continue to run the fall athletic programs in accordance with their guidelines. So even though the students at the high school in the fall will be remote students, we still intend to run the athletic programs as long as NJ SIAA permits. So in summary, um, our, the middle and high school students are going to open up September 8th with full-time remote instruction for all students. We will reevaluate, evaluate that October 15th or sooner if we can acquire an adequate number of, of teacher, replacement teachers, or substitute teachers to cover all of those, uh, positions that, for which we're offering accommodations. Um, we would hope to return to in-person instruction at the middle and high school level by November 2nd or sooner. Um, at the, uh, elementary level, in-person instruction will, will be our model for pre-K through 5, that will begin September 8th, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, in, in school for early dismissal days and virtual Wednesday. Um, the K-5 remote students will stream into their assigned classrooms at their homeschool. Um, so we'll revise our plan. We will submit that to the New Jersey Department of Education. There apparently is another checklist or, uh, a review, uh, statement that has not yet been released for district's planning to do full-time remote. As soon as we receive that document, we will submit that as well. Again, I cannot emphasize this strongly enough. Our decision to do full-time remote at the middle and high school level is not based on any concern with regard to health and safety. It is merely a staffing concern that we do not have adequate substitute personnel to provide the supervision in the classrooms to cover the teachers who have requested accommodations and will be teaching remotely from home. So as soon as we can resolve that issue, hopefully sometime prior to November 2nd, uh, we will have those students back in school. So that concludes my, uh, PowerPoint.
Thank you very much, Dr. Rovatar. Again, as Dr. Rovatar mentioned, this is a change from what we did on August 8th, and she went through the rationale why we had to make that change. We just do not have the staff to cover all of the classrooms. Uh, I know that her office will be advertising, contacting colleges, contacting employment agencies to see if there's any way we can get substitutes as soon as possible so we can make this in-person happen at the, both the middle school and the high school. This revision would request a vote. It is J6. I'm going to entertain a motion for J6, and then I'll open it up for discussion because that's usually the way it's done. We approve a motion and then we will open it up. So may I have a motion on J6? J6, basically, do the board members, public have a copy of J6?
Uh, I did email a copy of, of the, uh, J6 to the board.
Okay, uh, basically, why don't you summarize it, Renee, quickly? We don't have to put all the whereas's, but.
Right, so, um, it, it really, the resolution reflects the changes that I just stated that, uh, we would reopen, um, the schools, um, you know, we have, uh, met the health and safety parameters, but due to staffing concerns, we will start the school year, uh, with full remote uh, for our middle and high school students, hoping that we can return to school in-person instruction by November 2nd. Um, and, uh, our, um, K-5, pre-K-5 students will, um, have in-person instruction in accordance with the model that we had, uh, previously included in our plan. The only change there is that the remote students will not be, uh, placed in cross-district classes. They will be in classes based on their homeschool and will be streaming into, to the classroom.
So moved. Okay. Moved by?
Mr. O'Brien?
Mr. I go? Second, please.
Second.
Mr. Palmer? And we can't say the picture's up there, so. Okay, discussion from board members regarding the revised resolution? Any comments or questions? And then if not, we'll open it up to the public. I know that, uh. David? Modra?
Yeah, uh, thanks. Okay, um, personally, I think the schools are going to be one of the safest places around. We've done a lot of things. Um, it's, I'm disappointed that we're not going to be able to do this right away. Um, but I'm sure you'll get the question, why can't we just have the in-person classes that we're able to do and then remote for the classes that we can't have in-person for? I'm sure that'll come up, so I'll ask that.
Well, um, you have to understand that the, the, the positions that we're looking to replace, you know, are across multiple grade levels. And I, you know, if a student is taking, you know, uh, Spanish AP and I don't have a substitute to put into that class and they're an in-person student, and that's, I, I can't operate a school without providing supervision in each one of those classes. So I can't say that, you know, that anybody who's taking Spanish AP has to sit home, uh, but everybody else come in. I, I mean, that, that's not a structure that we can, um, move it, move forward with.
And so does we get more bodies. It'll all disappear, the problems, right?
Yeah, I mean, we, we just need an adequate number of substitutes to cover.
Any other board members?
Looks like Dave is frozen. Uh, Mike O'Brien has his hand up.
Mike O'Brien?
I, I think, I just want to comment that I think the administration is doing a terrific job under the difficult circumstances that they're faced with. I really appreciate all the work that's gone in this week to what we're trying to do to get reopened as much as we can, according to our plan. So I appreciate the work.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Any other board members? I don't see any hands up, but then I don't see too many bodies.
I have a question, Charlie.
All right, Christine Fano?
Um, Dr. Rovatar, I have a question. If possibly the, the county can speed up all of these, uh, you know, fingerprint, um, checks and so forth, if that has been asked, because that would be great if we can get that done quicker, you know, sooner than later, if that, so I was just wondering.
Um, I, I don't know that there's a way to expedite that. Um, I, I think they typically do, uh, turn things around as quickly as they can, but particularly with, with, you know, with the fingerprint, with the criminal history background check, you know, there sometimes is, uh, somewhat of a backlog in getting those appointments scheduled. So, um, you know, we're at the mercy of other people in terms of processing that information.
But I'm sure the county realizes there's quite a few districts in the same position, and I'm sure they will help out whoever is going through it, especially to get the fingerprinting component of it. But thank you, Christine, for your comment. All right.
Can I, can I say something, Michelle?
Yeah.
Michelle?
Um, I want to echo what Mike said to thank the administration. I just, I, I would imagine and hope that all the members of the public know that this hasn't been easy and our administration has been working tirelessly. I, um, I for one, you know, the information that has come out in terms of the numbers this week, um, and also the fact that the, our plan was approved in all aspects by the Department of Education, um, I thought was a very important thing. Um, and, you know, I, the, the circumstance that happened with the numbers, I, I really hope people realize are not a function of, you know, opinions about health or anything that's wrong with our plan. It, it's literally that, you know, it can't be staffed. And I believe truly that the administration is working towards doing that as expeditiously as possible. I do have one question because I imagine it might come up at the elementary level. If based on hearing this at the elementary level, a parent wants to change the response to the survey for some reason, given that, you know, how they thought it would be is different now, um, is that going to be an option for the elementary parents?
Um, it should be an option. As the plan states, if parents want to make those changes, I would say, please, 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 let us know. I, don't let me know, let your principal know, uh, sooner rather than later.
Okay, Michelle? Thank you. I don't see any other hands.
No.
Okay, uh, we would open before we take a vote. We would entertain an, an open discussion just on this motion, uh, from the public. Uh, we don't have too many speakers right now, so we'll stay to our five-minute board policy threshold. But if it gets cumbersome, we're going to have to cut it off because already we're up to 10 speakers. And I think what we've said is pretty clear, so let's start. And don't feel bad. Let's see what we have in terms of questions.
All right, let me make my typical announcement that if you're joining us, uh, in the Zoom webinar and you'd like to speak, please, uh, press the raise your hand button. If you are joining us on YouTube and you'd like to speak, please, um, follow the directions in the video description for how to join us in the Zoom webinar. Okay, um, our first, uh, speaker, um, uh, Torina Elias?
Hi. Hello.
Hello.
Hi, um, actually, that just changed everything that I had written here, and it really blows me away as a mother of a sophomore going to high school. Um, I, I'm going to start with the same start that I had prepared here, saying that I am a member of the teachers' union. And my go-to was the unhappiness of J2, how it was brought to the board, and how it was brought before the survey was put out to the public. And the board members, thank you for your service, but it, board members are supposed to be a voice of the community. And that really took me back, not a voice of the teachers' union. And I understand now, things have changed. It's not a J2 that I'm fighting for, but I'm fighting for all the kids that need to get in class, not only for their educational reasons, but for mental reasons, um, social reasons. I would hate to go to those fields right now in Montville and tell those kids that are in uniform that are so happy to put on that uniform, and thank you for that, that they are going back to the computer because now, I understand, we don't have it together to have enough staff. I say, I, at this point, I say, put school on hold because we know, we know, there isn't one person that says virtual learning is learning. So put it on hold until we can get our schools fully functioning to the point where we're educating our kids. And then my second question is, is, and, um, is as a Montville taxpayer, I want to know if the board is going to require the teachers to be at school, at school, for their full contracted day? Even if it's a half a day, are they going to be required to be at school? I don't care if they're in an empty classroom because I think we can all go back to Facebook posts, and it's been going around all summer. These teachers and myself have been living a regular summer life. It's not like we haven't left the house. And mind you, um, we have fought very hard in New Jersey to get to the point where we are with the RT rate. And sacrifices have been made for nearly six months, including the kid's sacrifice. And, um, okay.
This is Elias. You're approaching, we had your two points.
Yeah, I would respond, this is Elias. Yes, our intention is for all the teachers, unless they are one of those teachers that have been granted a, a medical accommodation to teach from home, everyone else will be teaching from the building on those days, you know, when we had in-person instruction scheduled. So that would be Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday.
Okay, I would request they are supposed to be in school on Wednesday, too. Full contracted days, not a day off.
I'm sorry, this is Elias. I, you probably missed in our plan that the reason, one of the reasons that we have virtual Wednesday is to allow our custodial staff to do the deep cleaning. I know that that's not as essential at the high school because we will not have all the students there, but we will have staff there. So the deep cleaning will still take place on the virtual Wednesday.
Right, but I'm on back and forth.
This is Elias.
Clean every day. They get out at 2:10. They can clean every day. We don't need another day off. That's.
This is Elias.
All right, I, I want to let some other people, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would recognize Natalie Peal. Natalie, it looks like you're muted. We got you.
Okay, wonderful. Um, I'm the mom of a, of an elementary student. And, um, I was wondering, she, she'll be full-time remote. And I was wondering if, um, I did want to change her status, if it's still the same to do so at the marking periods.
You can still do it at the marking period, but if you wanted to change your status for the start of school, I would suggest that you do it within the next two days.
Contact your principal.
Contact the principal.
Principal Bella, okay? Thank you.
Uh, Sherry Eichenbaum?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, so I have a question about the virtual learners at the elementary level. Um, so would they be staying with the home elementary school teacher until the end of the year, if that's their preference or choice? Would, is that how it would go?
Yeah, they're, they are assigned to a class, uh, that, that theoretically will be their class assignment for the full year, whether they are in-person or full-time remote.
Okay.
And that class, that class is based in their homeschool.
So if they choose to stay remote for the whole year, that's their class for the year? Um, gotcha. And the other question is, what, what are we going to do if there's a power outage? Do we have a backup plan? Like, um, a packet to go for a week? Um, because if we lo, lose power, like we recently did, what's the backup plan?
We lost the power for a couple of days, most of us.
Oh, five days for me, and I didn't even have cell phone service because my tower was down.
We're trying to stress that with KCP.
It was very bad for us.
Unfortunately, our, our, uh, our, uh, our structure. Unfortunately, our, our, uh, our, uh, our structure is really not about packets. So, um, you know, and we've been through this before in town where we have had some emergency closures due to power outages. We, we just have to do the best we can.
So would there be a way, would there be a way that whoever our class teacher is, we could maybe have like some individual, um, plan for our kid in case, say I got hit with a week of no power? So I could do something individual with my kid for a week so he got credit? Like kind of extra credit or something, you know, to prove that we did meet all of our core subject areas? Is there a way that could be done?
If we're not open and we're not able to deliver that instruction, then it doesn't count as a school day, no matter what you're doing at home.
But what if you're open, but we're, my section of town's not?
Yeah, I mean, that, I, I can't speak to every eventuality. I mean, we, again, we do the best we can under those circumstances. And we know that they do happen periodically.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Sherry.
Elizabeth Crosskopf?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
So I believe you answered my question. If we had chosen virtual, um, under the assumption that it was going to be, um, all the elementary schools were going to be lumped into one class, and that is no longer going to be the format, um, we can change our minds and send that to our elementary principal saying, we would like to now be, go, go either way?
Well, your, your only choice is if you've, if you've already elected to be, uh, full-time remote, then don't assign to a teacher in your home school.
But now it's not going to be, and now it's not going to be, um, lumped together. So if, if we chose.
No, you're.
If we chose.
There's no lumping together.
If we chose in-class, in-person, we can go back to choosing remote. And now we will still essentially be in the same classroom with the classmates that we're being pulled from. Will there be interaction with those remote entering the classroom?
I'm sorry, I missed your point. Will there be?
Interaction with those remote and in.
Like a regular class?
Yeah. The, the students can hear the teacher and the teacher will be able to hear the student.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you very much, Elizabeth.
If you are looking to make a change, please contact your principal as soon as possible. That's very, I can't stress that enough. It's very important for our planning. Um, next, uh, S. Rose?
Hi, can you hear me? Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
She can hear you.
I appreciate it. Can, um, because the change in the classroom structure, will you reconsider and allow students who are, um, going to be, um, quarantined to attend their classrooms and not count them as absent if they zoom in?
Uh, we were never going to count any students who were quarantined as being absent. That was never part of the plan. We understand that there are probably going to be some times when students are going to be quarantined. Unless they personally are sick, they are certainly welcome to, uh, participate remotely with their class.
Okay, so that is a change. That's great, thank you.
Um, Mrs. Ervelino?
Mrs. Ervelino?
I don't know if you're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, but please speak up.
A little louder.
Because you're, it's very soft.
Can you hear me now?
Louder, louder.
I can't go any louder, but I'll speak loud.
Okay, we can hear you.
Okay. Dr. Ropthard, the teachers that have requested accommodations, is there, is that for an indefinite amount of time? Is the November 2nd the deadline for the teachers to come back? Or how is that going to work? Like, what is going to happen that we can go back on November 2nd?
What would happen by November 2nd is we would have hopefully an adequate number of substitutes to be able to cover the classrooms where those teachers are being accommodated and they're teaching from home. So most of them are, it's medical related. So, um, it's, it's not anticipated that those issues would necessarily be resolved for the teachers within two months. But hopefully within two months, we'll have the necessary personnel to cover all of those in-person teaching assignments.
Okay, okay. That was my, everybody else answered my other questions. Thank you, I appreciate it. Very disappointed, but I'm sure it can't be helped.
Okay.
Um, Mrs. Colotrello?
Can you hear me? Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, yes, um, I, I have to second, uh, the sentiments that Mrs. Elias has set, um, that we are not having in-person, uh, learning because of a staffing issue, not because of a safety issue. So this is really disappointing that, uh, so I'd like to know if we handle or resolve this staffing issue, uh, sooner than later, will we, uh, resume to have in-person learning?
Absolutely, I thought I had made that clear. If I didn't, I apologize. As soon as we have adequate replacement teachers or substitute teachers to cover all of those positions at the middle and high school level, we're good to return to in-person instruction.
That's why the resolution says October 30th or sooner. Okay, so we want to go as soon as we can.
Okay, so, um, the other, uh, no, the other thing I, I want to ask is that, uh, what's the split between the teachers that have requested this alternate accommodation between the high school and middle school?
10 at the high school, 9 at the middle school.
So we can't find 10 substitutes at the high school? I have a sophomore at the high school. And, and I, these kids have to go back. So.
Well, you have to understand that we, we need more than just 19 people. Because in addition to, and we need those people to commit to work four days a week. Because what we cannot have is a revolving door of substitutes coming in to me with those classes. We want, you know, consistent people assigned to those, uh, replacement positions. But beyond that, we still need, uh, our adequate number of substitutes to cover the day-to-day absences that occur and we know are going to continue to occur in those buildings. And that's anywhere from seven to 12 to 15 staff members. So we need to go beyond the number of typical substitutes we have. And what we really need is 19 new people or 19 additional people so that we have enough, uh, people to cover those in-class assignments.
It, it's, it's really disappointing that, uh, we didn't plan for this or we didn't see this coming. Uh, because honestly, uh, it's not an issue of safety. If there was an issue that, that the, uh, the government is telling that we can't do in-person, uh, learning, then that's a different story, but it's a staffing issue, people, these kids. I, I, again, I second Mrs. Elias would, she's saying these students need to go back in the classroom for multiple reasons. So we need to speed that up or do something differently. Because, uh, again, it's very disappointing that we're not ready for.
Mrs. Colotrello? We are doing everything we can. We're, we're doing everything we can to get the substitutes, to get the kids back into the school. We're aware of it. We're doing everything we can, we're looking all over for these substitutes. It's not like we're just sitting here. Please, if you know of anybody, if you have friends or relatives that are certified teachers or substitutes, or 60 college credits that want to work four days a week, send them into the board office here and let, we'll sign them up.
I, I also want to add that, you know, based on conversations that took place during a meeting of the, all the superintendents in Morris County today, there are quite a number of other districts in Morris County that are experiencing the exact same situation that we are. So I, I believe, uh, that you can expect to have other districts, um, be, you know, determining that they will, um, be having to go full virtual for staffing reasons. It's not unique to Montville.
Mrs. Colotrello, I'm going to have to, I, uh, we've, I, we got your point, I think, but there's some other speakers that we'd like to hear. So if you don't mind, you can come back in at the end. But I'd like to go to the next speaker now. We have your point, Mrs. Colotrello, and thank you for speaking.
That's fine, you know, that's fine, uh, I, I, that's fine, I'm done. I just wanted to express, uh, just that how disappointing it is, but, uh, it's fine.
Thank you.
Okay, um, next, uh, A.A.?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Uh, my name is Afshin and I have two kids in Valley View. My question is, will you guys be, uh, sharing the result of the survey? Just to see the one that we completed on August 12th, to see what percentage of students are going, uh, in to school and what percentage of students are doing full-time remote?
Yes, I did, you must have joined us a little bit late because that was the first slide in my PowerPoint presentation. We do have 1,015 students across all grade levels that have selected full-time remote. That represents about 29% of the, the student population.
Uh, so from the same perspective, what kind of numbers are we looking at in each classroom? Let's say like in a typical classroom, like my son was second grader last year, had 20 students. Are we expecting more like 10 students in that classroom now? Are we expecting more like, um, 16 as a maximum? Just to kind of get, wrap my brain around it.
Yeah, it, well, it varies from school to school. But obviously with, you know, remote students, the, the number of, uh, students in the class is lower. I, I can't speak to, you know, the specific situation at, at Valley View. Um, but, you know, definitely the, the class numbers are lower than what we typically have had in the past for in-person instruction.
Okay, and will there be like a max number assigned to a classroom?
Well, the board has a policy on that. And we are adhering to the board policy, depending upon the grade level, the, those numbers are anywhere between 23 and 26, uh, you know, per class. But those numbers will not be that high due to the number of students that are full-time remote.
Okay, thanks so much. And thank you for all the effort you all are putting in there.
Oh, thank you.
Um, next speaker, Elise Carr?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, um, I wanted to just thank everyone for all the work they've done. And initially just to address, um, the, the issue of the substitute teachers. Um, and correct me if I'm wrong. The reason why, um, Montville is looking for substitute teachers to be stationary in a particular building is because typically substitute teachers can go from school to school as well as district to district. And if we're in the middle of a pandemic, the reason why we're doing that is because we want to make sure that we're containing travel and we're containing the travel of infection as well. Would I be correct in saying that?
That is 100% correct, yeah.
Okay, so just for, yes, everyone's very disappointed. Um, as an employee of a school district as well, in a different county, I can tell you that substitute teachers have been, um, in short supply well before the pandemic. And so that's not just Morris County, that's Essex County as well. And so that's something that unfortunately now, the nature of a substitute teacher is kind of changing because we don't want to promote transmission, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and, and some of this just comes from my frustration, unfortunately, um, with some of the comments that I've seen throughout the community in terms of, um, teachers. And I think also the understanding needs to come from the perspective of that a teacher, um, does have the right to request the full virtual if they do have, um, a medical reason, as well as the fact that the employer, no matter if it's a school district or another kind of employer in any other kind of business, needs to adhere to the Americans with Disabilities Act in terms of being able to, um, provide accommodations. So that's something that I just wanted everyone to hear in terms of the reason why you're seeing those numbers with staff, among other reasons.
Thank you, Elise.
Clarify for me, um, and clarify for the community in terms of some of the comments that I've seen. Um, number one, what was stated earlier, Wednesday being a quote-unquote "day off." Can you please describe, um, what the teachers will be doing on their day off? Because I assume they're not going to be kicking back and having coffee and drinks all day. And secondly.
Well, I should later finish first.
No, go ahead.
And secondly, if you can also just clarify, um, there's a little bit of confusion about the new requirements, um, as compared to, um, when we were on quarantine, of the, um, amount of face-to-face instruction that will be occurring throughout the day if you're virtual.
Okay, um, and first of all, I object to your characterization of our virtual Wednesday as a day off. It is a day when people are not present in school, but it is not a day off. Um, the.
Right, I wasn't characterizing that. I, I was commenting on someone else who was characterizing that.
Okay, um, there is a regular schedule of instruction, um, that will be delivered, uh, depending upon the grade level. But it, it is a full day, you know, full, uh, early dismissal length day of instruction. Um, the, um, you know, the same thing goes. And, and all of this information is reflected in our plan. Um, yes, there are increased expectations for, um, the remote instruction, uh, that will, um, encompass, um, face-to-face, uh, connection between the students and the teachers on a daily basis. Um, our schedules are set to run synchronously. That means that, you know, it's the same schedule whether students are in, in person or remote. Um, they are following all of those, uh, core subject areas at the elementary school. Um, you know, ELA, math, social studies, science, uh, so all of that information is included in the plan.
Thank you, Elise.
All right, thank you very much.
Can we move on now?
Okay, um, next, Sandy Coulson?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
I muted her by accident.
Oh, uh, Sandy, can you try again? Sorry.
Is that better?
Technical. Yeah, you're good.
Great. Uh, my concern is on the elementary level with social distancing. If there's 23 kids in a classroom and say 30%, we're going to err on the, the side of higher, um, are virtual, that leaves us with an average of 17 kids. Those classrooms are pretty tight. How are you going to acknowledge the social distancing required?
Yeah, we, uh, you know, the, the principals, um, have, uh, you know, begun to set up those classrooms. And we are, as our plan indicates, able to provide, uh, between three and six feet, um, you know, in those elementary classrooms. In addition, we have the desk shields that will be on top of that. And all of our students are required to wear masks. All of the desks are facing in the same direction. So we really are meeting all of the parameters that have been set forth by the state.
So three feet will be in between every child, front to back, left to right?
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you, Sandy.
Okay. Uh, Jacqueline Delbon?
Hello?
Yes.
Hi there. Hi, I'm a rising junior at Montville, actually, and I have two questions for you. Uh, my first is if there's any note on when schedules will be out?
Uh, I can't speak to that. That's a question, if you want to reach out to, uh, Mr. Sanford, he could probably answer that for you. Typically, it's, uh, you know, towards the end of August. I know the process has been complicated this year just by virtue of, you know, what we're going through and dealing with tonight. Um, but it, you know, Mr. Sanford could certainly answer that for you.
All right, thank you, I will definitely reach out to him. Also, um, as stated previously before, distance learning is not the most suitable substitute for in-person. And, uh, last year's finals were actually canceled. So my question is, was there any discussion about this year's approach to midterm standardized testing and finals?
We have not had those discussions yet. Uh, but I can tell you just an update, Jacqueline, uh, through the. Through the magic of technology, I believe Mr. Sanford is watching the meeting tonight. And he did just text me that the schedules should be available to students on August 25th.
That's great. All right, those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacqueline.
Um, our next speaker, Scott O'Neill.
Hi, how are you? This is Sheila, Scott's wife. I have a sixth grader that will be new to Lazar. Is there any type of virtual orientation? Just going over the school day with them? We really don't know what to expect in the middle school. And now with it being virtual, you know, kind of more, more concerned.
Sure, I do believe that, well, we were never planning on having an in-person orientation. But I do believe if you want to reach out to Mr. Pachuto, the Lazar School principal, he could probably provide some information to you on that.
Okay.
Okay.
I have one more quick question regarding the elementary school. Is there any type of orientation available for the students at the elementary school level? I have a third and fourth grader, and I'm just wondering if the school is gonna look any different? If maybe that would ease their anxiety, if they have any, by being able to like just walk through the school just to see what the classrooms would look like before going to school? Is that an option at all?
Unfortunately, we are not able to offer that option. Yes, the schools will look different, for sure. But we are not able to offer the option to, to bring people through and, and before the start of the school year.
Okay, thank you.
Doris Lee.
Uh, hi, before, on the last meeting, the committee did, or your PowerPoint that you present said that if the teacher is gonna do both remote and in-class, that there were, is too much for the teacher. So right now, now the, you changed the policy to doing both, that one teacher doing remote plus in-person. How is that gonna affect the, the class?
Well, I did, I did mention in my PowerPoint that the change is that we will have two adults in the classroom, either, you know, two teachers or a teacher and a paraprofessional, someone else there in the classroom to support the teacher, to facilitate, you know, the instruction and, and to be able to incorporate the, the remote students and the in-person students. So with that additional support, we do feel that this is a workable model for us.
Um, so you're thinking about, it's gonna be 17, about 17 kids or less? And then with two teachers in one classroom? And is, you guys are able to have three, three feet to six feet apart per person?
Yeah.
Okay, that will be it. Thank you very much.
Crystal Egger.
Good evening. Thank you all for your hard work. I don't envy your position. It seems there's no correct answer. But I had one thought about the high school, the middle school and high school. I was wondering if you had considered it. Dr. Rovatar, you stated that you typically plan for between seven and 12 substitutes for normal teacher absences. And at least 19 substitutes would be required for the typical, typical coverage. I was just wondering if it was possible or if you had considered kind of shifting those substitutes that would cover normal absences toward your goal of 19 or more daily subs? And then getting, in order to get the students back in the classroom more regularly? And then when the teachers are absent, emailing those students who are affected and say, "I'm sorry, one of your teachers is absent, and you need to stay home today." It would be possibly more of a juggle, but it would get students back into the classroom possibly more, more quickly and overall be less disruptive, I think.
Um, I, I appreciate your suggestion. Yes, we did, um, we did reach out to our current substitute pool. And we only had about eight people that were willing to commit to, you know, serving as those daily subs to cover those accommodated teachers. So, yes, we, we are approaching it that way. We just don't have enough people to get that to happen. And the seven to 12 is not district-wide absences on a daily basis. That's in a building, you know, at the high school or the middle school. So, so we're looking at a significant number of absences. In terms of, um, the logistics of a system where we would be able to communicate early enough to tell kids specifically that they needed to stay home because one of their teachers was gonna be out on a certain day, I, the logistics of that are, are just not workable. I, I'm, you know, I'm sorry, but it's just not something that we could undertake. Okay.
Thank you.
Um, Callid Keel.
Hi, good evening. So, uh, I'm sure as many of you can imagine, you know, having virtual learning has impacted parents' ability to earn a living, among other things, including finding childcare. And I just want to know, what is the board doing? I mean, are, are teachers, are their salaries getting docked? I mean, they're not working full-time. Are they still getting paid full salary?
Our, our teachers are committed to work a full day. While our, our students are only in attendance, you know, on an early dismissal mode, our teachers have responsibilities in the afternoon as well. So they, they will be paid their full salaries, and they are on the clock for us for the full contractual day.
Well, we, we know based on experience from the previous virtual learning session that that was not the case. Most teachers did not have virtual learning sessions. They just gave worksheets via email. And, and if that is the case, then, you know, what, what policies or audit or compliance programs are you putting in place so teachers aren't tutoring students in their homes during the day? Because we're seeing a lot of that happening. So what are you guys doing to, to prevent teachers from tutoring while they should be quote-unquote "virtually teaching"?
I don't know.
Well, our, our, if you take a look at the plan, you know, we have a full synchronous morning schedule that, that, you know, the teachers are working with the students for that full period of time. You know, the, what goes on after those hours varies. Whether it's small group, you know, working with small groups, we have, you know, some other, you know, counselors running groups in the afternoon. It, it, it differs, it varies. But I, you know, we do have, our, our principals will be supervising and monitoring that instruction. And our, our expectations are much more rigorous. What happened in the spring was, you know, we were forced into this. We were in crisis mode. But, you know, we have concrete plans and expectations for the teachers starting in September that are much more rigorous than what we had in the spring.
Yeah, well, where are those policies and procedures? I'd like to take a look at them because I could tell you if the virtual...
They're in our plan.
I can tell you...
Take a look at our plan.
Just let me finish. If I, if, if the virtual learning this fall is anything like it was in the spring, you might as well just throw it in the trash because the kids didn't learn a thing, okay? We had worksheets being sent through the emails, and parents were being expected to teach the children materials that they haven't done in probably 30 years. So I really do find it objectionable that we're paying teachers full salary who don't want to go back to work and do what's right for the kids that they apparently care for. I really do have an objection to that, okay? So if they don't want to go back to work for whatever reason they're expressing, you know, as opposed to cops who have to go to work every day, as opposed to firemen, or anybody else who has to earn a paycheck week to week, and they refuse to show up to work but are still getting paid a full salary, I do find that objectionable as a tax parent, okay? Because it's a simple contract to me. I pay taxes, okay? And I expect services for them, which I'm not getting. And so if they're not gonna provide the services that we pay taxes for, they shouldn't be getting a full salary if they don't want to come to work.
Sir, I would sug- I would suggest you look at the plan that Dr. Rovatar spoke about. And if you know of anybody that's tutoring and they're supposed to be working and getting paid by a private parent, please let us know that because we agree with you. If they're supposed to be working with the students we have, they should not be out tutoring, making X dollars an hour on our time. But please, as Dr. Rovatar mentioned, when this happened in the spring, we were unprepared, as everybody was. We are much better prepared now. We've had teachers in-service. Teachers are doing a job. There's a schedule laid out for them. So please take advantage of that and look at the reopening plan that we have on. I think that would be very beneficial.
I'll take a look at it, but I would really appreciate if the board can evaluate the situation on a monthly basis. Because I don't think it's gonna go as smoothly as everybody's anticipating it to go at all. It's one thing to do this in the spring when the kids have learned most of the material and a lot of the stuff the teachers were doing was, was, was reviewing. But you're starting a new school year where they're gonna be learning new material. And I, I really do hope you really look at this issue. Because I don't think it's gonna go as well as people think it is.
All right, it's being monitored, and we get updated evaluations. And I think that we're gonna be doing an outstanding job. Is this as good as in-person? Of course not. But I think we're doing a great job. I'm gonna take five more questions, and then we're gonna go into the agenda because we, that'll be 20 questions that we've answered. And every time it gets down, more and more people come up, and we're gonna be cutting this off in four more questions. So next one, please, Renee.
Uh, Mr. Stentowski.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, um, I want, uh, I just want to echo the disappointment as parents of a high school student and understand that, um, my understanding is that 10 teachers you're looking for for the high school level, which will allow you to provide in-person learning. And when did this come to your knowledge that you didn't have adequate teacher staff to open the high school as planned? You've had now since March.
Sir, let her, let her finish.
Well, just as parents had a survey to complete to indicate that, that they wanted to have their students on full-time remote, our staff had the opportunity to submit documentation requesting a, you know, an accommodation. We did not finalize or receive all that paperwork until probably late last week. You know, we had a deadline set. So no, we have not known about this since March.
So why, why don't other school districts? We have family throughout all of New Jersey. I don't know of any other school district in New Jersey that has this issue. Why, why not?
I, I think you've... I think you're gonna find, be very shocked in the next week or two, okay? So please...
Well, it should have, it should have been addressed way before last week. That's all I have to say.
We, we didn't, but the superintendent's just indicated that we found out about it last week.
Yeah, but knowing that...
And someone is just saying that we could have done it last March. Sir, we have a plan. We're talking about the plan that's being, was moved and seconded about being submitted. Do you have a question on the plan?
No, the plan is not the plan that I saw because the plan is not coming to fruition, you know, in the time that it's supposed to at the start of the school year. So a plan is only as good as being able to follow through on it.
Well, the plan we're adopting tonight with Article J6 is the plan that will be sent down to the State Department. We would never have submitted a plan on August 8th if we knew we had these problems, okay? I'm gonna, do you have any other points, sir?
No, not at this time. Just very disappointed with the situation.
Well, we're very disappointed that we can't get enough subs also, sir. Next, uh...
Uh, Larry.
Larry? All right, let's skip Larry.
I, I, he should be there now.
Larry, are you there?
Come on, let's go. Next.
Okay, I'm gonna skip you, Larry. Mr. Sontz.
Who is it?
Mr. Sontz.
Spell it.
Hi, Dr. Rovatar. Quick question. You know, I've been listening to this and hearing that, you know, understand you don't have enough substitutes, and this just came to your attention, you know, in the past week. And, you know, if the pandemic doesn't end anytime soon, it sounds like we're gonna be full remote for the entire year. I guess my question goes to, are you reaching out to your counterparts in other school districts to see what they may be doing different to open up their schools, especially if they don't have the substitute problem?
Either maybe.
Um, I, I, I did mention a little bit earlier that we did have a superintendent's meeting today. And there are quite a number of school districts that are in the exact same situation that we are. And I would expect over the next week that you are going to see quite a number of schools shift to full-time remote because they cannot, they cannot address the staffing issue.
So it sounds that, so then my follow-up question is, it sounds like if, if, if the other school districts are having the same substitute issue that we are, then it's most likely that we will be remote for the entire year unless the pandemic passed.
I wouldn't say that, no, no.
I'm telling people, you know, if there, if there are people in town that are unemployed, underemployed, and if you've got 60 college credits, please, you know, visit our website and access the information about filing to get a substitute certificate. You know, we're, we're always in need of substitutes. We never really have enough. But now more than ever, you know, the need is critical. I know there are probably some people that are looking for work. We welcome you.
And how long does that process take? If, if you were to get enough people, how long would the process take to get everybody through to get the substitute you need?
It takes, uh, you know, anywhere from four to six, eight weeks, you know, to get that all the way through the process.
And my last question... No, no, I get that. And, and my last question, and I, I thank you for your time, is that, is there any talks with, with the state on expediting that process? Considering this is a, you know, this is a, this is a, a point that most, this is an issue that most school districts are, are facing to start up in-person? Has there been any discussions with the state on that?
Well, the, the county substitute certificates are processed in, in Morristown, in the Morris County office. They have a lovely lady that does that. And I, I'm sure that she will work her fingers to the bone to process as many of these as quickly as she can.
Right. Thank you guys for your time.
Uh, David Honig.
Hello?
Hi, David.
How are you? Um, good evening. And I want to start by saying, I want to thank everybody here. I know it's unprecedented times. I know it's really stressful. We're in this together. Am I disappointed? Yes, very disappointed. But I totally understand the predicament that we're all in and so, and you're in. So for one, I thank you all for all your hard work. In regards to the amount of substitute teachers that you need, 10 in the high school and nine in the middle school, do you have something that's minimally viable? So if you have 15, you open up the schools? And two, um, do you have to over-hire to, 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 um, be able to have these roamers when, when teachers do call in sick? And three, is there a situation that could occur where you hire, you, you meet your quota at the high school level, but you don't at the mid-school, uh, middle school level? And, and you have to make the decision, one or the other? Or, or is high school, middle school all in it together?
All right, let me, let me deal with the last one first because that's the easiest. If we can get either of those buildings up and going, we'll, we'll do that. I'm not, I'm not waiting for us to, uh, you know, to have to do them both together. But no, 15 is, we need at least 19 to staff all those classrooms. And then we need a little bit excess so that we can cover, you know, the, the day-to-day absences. So I, I can't minimalize the 19. You know, that's a hard number. We need to replace each one of those positions.
Okay.
Okay, Dave.
Yeah, and one, one other question. Are you gonna be reporting on a weekly basis when you hire people? So we have an understanding of the scorecard?
Um, I, I don't know that we want to do. I will certainly, uh, try to update parents on a weekly basis in terms of where we are. Um, but I'm, I'm saying, you know, you guys are out there in the community. Please help us out. You know, if you know of people that are, are candidates for substitutes, please send them our way and then we can get this done sooner rather than later.
Okay, thank you very much.
And I think that, that comment goes not just from Renee, but from the whole board. Please, we have, we've already, this is our 20th speaker coming up. As I mentioned, we're going to go to the agenda and then we have about another 15 up there. So that's what we'll do after the agenda. All right, the last speaker before we move to the agenda, please, is?
Scott Riato.
Scott is, go ahead, Scott.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. First and most importantly, I hope you and your families are safe and healthy. I think it's important to repeat what Dr. Rovatar and the parents said, that the coverage issues are not unique to Montville and are due to documented medical conditions specified under state and federal law. One parent correctly made reference to the 1990 Americans with Disabilities Act. But I am still concerned for the health and safety of my elementary colleagues and they are concerned about their class sizes and lack of six-feet social distancing, echoing some parental concern. So I'd like to draw your attention quickly to six items. One, the joint statement from the New Jersey Supervisors and Principals Association, the New Jersey Association of School Administrators, and the New Jersey Education Association from last Tuesday arguing against reopening in-person. Two, a new CDC report over the weekend indicating that COVID rates are, quote, steadily increasing, unquote, in children and ranking New Jersey as among the three hardest-hit states with multi-system inflammatory syndrome in children. Three, a new COVID Act Now report stating that New Jersey is no longer on track to contain the virus now that three counties are at risk, quote-unquote, of another outbreak. Four, the results from K through 12 schools around the country. Five, the spike in our neighbor, Kinnon, before schools have even reopened. And finally, six, the growing number of New Jersey school districts that have already voted to go all virtual. I urge you to consider allowing the elementary schools to go all virtual as well. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Scott. Uh, at this point, I would like to go back to the agenda. If we could, I know we have an open resolution on and we can address that at the conclusion when we're finished the discussion. Uh, Renee, uh, Kating, you indicated that you didn't have any report other than the construction's ongoing. Page three, I would ask, unless it's, we have committee reports and things of that nature, liaisons. Does anybody want to speak to anything there or can it wait till next, uh, the next meeting?
I think Mr. Rappaport.
I can't see anybody up there.
I think Mr. Rappaport indicated that he wanted to.
Do we have anybody up there? I can't see anybody's hand up. Okay, seeing no hands up? I'm sorry? Anybody have their hand up? I don't see any hands up.
Rappaport.
Mike, I can't, you're breaking up.
No, I, I was going to say, I, I can wait until, uh, our, our next meeting for my update.
Okay, great. Anybody else? Thank you, Mike. Okay. Consent resolutions? May I have a motion on everything except J six and the addendum, which is for the hubs?
The addendum is L four.
L four.
And we also need to note that M seven, which was.
Wait, 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 let me get to L four first, please. Okay?
L four and M seven, which is the adoption of curriculum, was inadvertently included. That resolution should be withdrawn from the agenda.
M seven?
M seven, yes.
All right, just cross it out. So may I have a motion with those changes, please? Starting with the minutes, may I have a motion, please?
Moved.
Moved by?
Mike Palmer.
Palmer, do I have a second, please?
Second.
Got that?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions on item J? J, um, four and five is something that we set our goals when Charlene Peterson was up. And I think if you're looking at J three, you should be very proud as part of the Q-SAC with the 100% response in four, the categories, and 91 in the other one. As you know, we had Q-SAC last year and they asked us to do it again as part of the next cycle. Okay, uh, K? Any changes on K? I think K four might look like we're issuing new permits, but not really. We're just rescinding the ones that have been issued for use of our buildings. L? H H K L M? And the policies, I know that one. All right, if there's no comments, Mrs. Slunt, roll call, please.
May I ask for clarification?
Excuse me?
May I ask for clarification? Is J six part of this?
No.
Thank you.
That'll be taken separate as it was a motion separate, okay?
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Dr. Cortalino?
Uh, yes, abstain on N four two.
Mr. Dotry? Mr. Dotry?
Joe? You muted, Joe.
Mrs. Fano?
Yes. Yes.
Joe Dotry, yes, Joe.
Dr. Modrak?
Yes.
Mr. Rappaport?
Abstain on M dot two, yes to everything else.
Mrs. Zuckerman?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes. Item, oh, we don't, we're not going into closed session. Any Q old business? I, I have under section R new business. I know that there's been a lot of talk here with the rescheduling and stuff. I know that Dr. Rovatar and Mrs. Slunt give us updates and I would like to include this to include Doc, Dr. Shorter and Mrs. Woodbine because they're the ones involved with a lot of questions that have come up tonight regarding certification. I know the programs at the elementary level are under Andrea's domain, so I'd like you two guys to be included along with Renee and Kating so we get an idea of all the board members of what's happening and we don't have to read about it elsewhere. All right, we're back to public participation. Uh, we're going to, it's now approaching nine o'clock. We have one, two, three, four, we have nine more. I think we'll hear those nine and 10 more, Austin tells me. We'll hear those 10 more and then Mr. Edelstein is available. And if we find out that we're going to have to cut discussion short because of time, he'll advise us accordingly. All right, item number, item number J six, this will be number 21.
Uh, Geraldine Castellano?
None of these people, people have spoken before, right?
That's correct.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hi, um, so I have a daughter in the high school. She's going to be a senior this year. I also have one that's going to be a freshman. Um, of course, my freshman is disappointed because she wanted to, you know, see the school and everything and be part of freshman year. But, uh, more importantly right now, my daughter who's a senior, um, is expressing a lot of anxieties, I'm sure many other seniors are, about getting enough time with their counselors, um, to be prepared to go on to college. Is there going to be enough time put aside with these counselors, uh, for the students to prepare, um, you know, to move on to a higher education?
Uh, my understanding is that if we're not in-person, that the, the typical counselor meetings will be scheduled virtually for the counselors to meet with the students. So I would not imagine that there would be any change in terms of how the, how those meetings typically work.
Okay. Um, and one other question. My senior, um, she's planning to go to school for vocal performance, um, in college. Now with this senior year with the pandemic going on, I, I see that there's not going to be a lot of vocal performance, um, in schools. What is going to happen with things like that with the performing arts, um, being, you know, music, um, things like that? Is there anything in place, uh, that go, you know, are hoping to go on to higher education in these fields? Uh, still going to be, um, performing and music at any level this year?
Yeah, we, we still have those classes, uh, scheduled. Um, so, you know, the high school level, they will still be meeting. Um, in terms of performance, obviously right now, that's not something that we can entertain in-person. But I, you know, I do know that, uh, the performing groups at the high school did some wonderful, uh, virtual, um, performances, uh, at the end of last year. Um, so until we can get back to normal in terms of those in-person performances, you know, that, that's probably how we will be handling those things.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Gasol.
Uh, Zorley Gomez?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hi, I'm, I have a question on the elementary level. Um, as far as kids with IEPs and special needs, who will they be meeting with, um, if they go full remote? Will they be meeting with their IEP or the regular teacher?
Um, I guess it depends on what the nature of the accommodations are. Um, what we typically do is try to try not to have those discussions in a public forum like this. I would suggest that you reach out to your case manager and/or Mrs. Chisay, who is our Director of Special Education, to deal with the specifics with regard to your child.
Okay, and then on that Wednesday or the, on virtual day, what hours? Is it going to be the same eight to 12?
Same, same, same school day, same school day hours, yeah.
Okay, so it'll all be half-day. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Addie Sabat?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Thank you guys for listening to our questions. I really appreciate it. I actually have a few questions. Um, my first one is, have you guys tried to get substitutes from some of the local universities that have kids looking to student teach?
We mentioned this at the beginning.
Yeah, we'll.
So maybe you came late, Abby, but we did go through this at the beginning.
Okay.
We're looking all over.
Um, my other question is regarding, uh, the sports. I know that you got, that sports are being allowed as of now. Um, are there going to be any restrictions for spectators?
That we don't know. That will be part of the, um, yeah, I guess the, uh, the second part of the season guidance that, uh, the NJ, NJ SIAA will be, uh, releasing, if I can believe what I heard during the governor's briefing yesterday. Um, they seem to indicate that that guidance might be coming by the end of this week, but they will, we believe they will be, uh, giving guidance with regard to spectators and such. And, you know, whatever that guidance is or whatever is decided by our conference, we will certainly be following those guidelines.
Okay. Um, and my third question.
Thank you, Abby.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
That's my last question. And I don't know if this has been asked before, but what is the reason that we are going to school part-time or half-days? Because I'm just really concerned. I have a freshman and a senior and I don't think that they'll be able to learn what they need to learn in half-days in a full semester or marking period.
Uh, the, the reason really revolves around lunch. Um, if you look online, um, and we've discussed this in prior meetings, but there, there is some explanation of it, I believe, in our question and answer document and in the plan. Um, we just, uh, do not have, again, it's a staffing issue, that, you know, we are really not able to provide that lunchtime coverage, um, to, to be able to provide a lunch period and, and that's what shortens our day.
No, I understand that, um, if they go in, but when they're going virtual only, is it still going to be half-days or is it going to be a full day?
Yeah, it's still half-days because, you know, we're, I'm very optimistic. I always am. I am hoping that, um, our full-time remote, uh, opening is, uh, very temporary in nature. And so, you know, we're having that schedule mirror what the in-person schedule will be when hopefully we can get everybody back in the building.
But if they're going to be virtual until the 30th, that's almost a full marking period, why are we doing just half-days while we're virtual? Why don't we try to get as much lurking as we can?
We're, we're hoping that our, you know, the, uh, we're hoping that the October 30th date is the worst-case scenario and that we can get back into school sooner than that.
Put your stuff in the afternoon, if, like, virtual meetings in the afternoon.
Right. What is there in the afternoon?
Well, there, there is some additional instruction. If your child is involved in a lab science, there is some additional instruction that will take place after the dismissal in the afternoon time slot.
No, I'm just very concerned because my kids have very rigorous schedules and I don't think that they can learn what they need to learn in a half-day, especially if it's ongoing. Um, we all know what half-days are like and what they've been like in the past. Um, while they're virtual, I don't understand why they cannot have a full day, at least while they're virtual. I know that there's the whole lunch situation when they're in and I realize that we're trying to be optimistic and trying to get them into school, you know, as soon as possible. However, we don't know when that will be. And while we're going virtual, why can they not have a full day? The teachers are getting paid for a full day. The kids need to learn a full day worth of material and I don't understand why they cannot have a full day of school. It makes no sense whatsoever and I'm very, very concerned. My son is in five AP classes. I know that he's not going to get the information he needs. I, I saw what happened last year at the end of the year. Um, they did not learn what they needed to for their AP exams and it's really unfair. It's a dis, it's a disservice to the children. It really is. And I know that everyone's disappointed and the kid's not going in and I'm not going to express that disappointment because I feel like that's, it is what it is and we can't do anything about that. But the fact that we don't have full days while they're not in school is unexplainable to me. I, I really, I would love a good explanation for that.
Well?
Oh, good, you know.
Because that's what we explained it.
Appreciate your input.
We explained it last time, last Saturday.
I wasn't here last Saturday. So I'm asking today what the explanation is.
Well, it's going to take more than five minutes ahead. So if you want to wait till the end of the meeting and ask another question, assuming the meeting is here, that's fine, but, uh, we're not going to tie up all the other people that have been here because we do have a five-minute limit per person, Abby. And you've already.
I'll wait till the end, that's fine. And if not, I would love to speak to you guys personally, but I really think they need a full day. There's no reason not to give them the full day. They deserve it.
Thank you, Abby.
Thank you.
Uh, Kim? Kim Gorman-Caravella?
Hello, can you hear me?
Hello.
You can hear me?
Hello.
Yeah. Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, um, my name's Aiden Jay. I'm, I'm a student, actually. I know that's kind of weird, but I'm. I'm a student, actually, I know that's kind of weird, but I'm talking on my mom's behalf. First off, I just want to say thank you because I know this isn't your fault. It makes me a little upset how people are almost bashing you guys, and it's not fair at all. But as a student and a son of a teacher, I think it was unfair how people are saying how teachers weren't doing their job and how their salaries should be lowered. But I could promise you, my mom was on that computer almost all hours of the day if it wasn't meetings, she was making new plans, working with other teachers and constantly working. So it made me a little upset how that speaker before was bashing teachers. And I know my mom's fellow teachers were also doing the same. And as a student, I could say I learned just as well virtually, if not better. So I know my fellow students also did as well, my fellow classmates. So he was saying how kids weren't learning as well, but I could promise you that's not true. And I also just want to say thank you so much, and that's all.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Karen Rankin.
Next.
Does she know she's muted?
Oh, Karen, are you muted? Okay, I'm gonna skip over Larry. Hopefully the connection is better this time.
Can you hear me?
It looks like, yeah, okay, you're good, yep.
I understand the competitiveness that you're finding to arrange for substitute teachers and the scarcity of them. Has there been any consideration to increasing that $100 a day stipend to be more competitive, to go to 125 or to go to 150 so we can get this done quickly?
I think at the beginning of the meeting, Larry, I don't know if you were here or you came late, but we asked the administration to look at what other districts are doing and to come back to us with a recommendation, okay? We said that at the beginning of the meeting.
I heard that. I do think it would be.
Well, that's what, that's what they're going to do, we have to find out.
Okay, but I think we should, even what we pay, because if there, if everybody's competing for the same substitute teachers, we need to be competitive.
I think we agree with you.
Larry, I can, I can tell you that the Morris School District is offering $195 a day and they can't find them either.
But we will make every effort to do that between advertising at the colleges and the various newspapers. Thank you, Larry.
Okay, Robert Van Leeve. Robert, it looks like you're muted.
Robert? I'll let you move on.
All right, Robert, come on back if you can. Andrea Cassidy.
The version of Zoom that they're using is too old.
Oh, I'm hearing from our Director of Technology that the version of Zoom that you're using is too old.
They just put their hand down. They literally put their hand.
Okay, Connie Chang.
Hi.
Oh, Connie.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. I want to echo the opinion that, you know, while the kids are remote full-time, it would be great to see a full day of school being conducted. But my also other question is, is there anything for the elementary school plan to be changed between now and the first day of school unless there is a statewide mandate that everybody goes remote? But other than that, is there any chance that you guys might be changing your opinion or your direction about the elementary school?
Connie, I can never say never, but at this point, I don't see that there would be any reason for us to change unless there was some directive that came at us from the state.
Okay, got it.
It's not our goal to change, Connie.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I appreciate that because we are seeing some other neighboring towns making other decisions, and I'm really, really happy to see that we're making this decision, offering in-person, you know, classes for our children, especially for the little ones. I think it's really critical, and I appreciate you guys making these decisions and holding these decisions as long as we can.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Thank you, Connie.
Piyush.
Who?
Piyush. I'm probably, I'm probably not saying it right, and I apologize.
Hey, hey, guys, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, it's pronounced Piyush. Hey, Dr. Renee and staff, thank you first of all for doing whatever you guys are doing. Quick thing, since I think virtual learning would become like a main way of learning, are you guys looking at Schoology? Because Schoology, as you guys would know by now, it's not like the best, you know, place to get the learning. It crashes, it's very hard to find the information. So wondering if there's any other medium application that you guys are looking at?
Can you tell me what age your children are?
So six and four.
Okay, so at the elementary level, in addition to Schoology, we are also going to be implementing the Seesaw platform. So there are, you know, there is an alternative at the elementary level, which is a little bit more, you know, geared to the early elementary capabilities.
Okay.
But we, but we still are using Schoology. Schoology still remains our base platform.
And I'm sure you heard from other parents too, right? It's not the best, or I think it's not even close to being the medium gear platform. Why don't we look at the other platforms like Google and all? I work in technology, so I know there are much better platforms that we can look at.
Well.
Because that would make life easy. You know, that would make life easy, Dr. Renee, for everyone because we get the daily notifications from teachers on that platform, and it's so hard to find anything on there.
Okay.
Okay, we appreciate your input.
Thank you.
Going to try Sophia Lacutis again.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Where you been, Sophia?
So I hope you all are doing great. I know times are tough. I just have a question for the three of you right now. Why are none of you wearing masks?
I think we're pretty close to six feet apart from each other.
Mm-hmm.
We're, she said we're six feet apart from each other.
All right, but I just.
But you are right.
You guys are in the same room, there's not.
I have it here, I have it here.
Well, if you have it, why aren't you wearing it?
Because I'm more than six feet.
I know, but you shouldn't be setting an example for.
Well, thank you. Can we answer your question, Sophia? Your point for calling?
That was my question, that you should be wearing masks and setting an example for the rest of the students.
Thank you.
All right.
I will put it on.
Great, thank you.
Melissa Materazzo.
Her version of Zoom is too old.
Melissa, you need to update your version of Zoom. Okay, who have we not heard from? Rupak Gajer.
Hi, yes, thank you. This is his wife, and he's here as well. Thank you for taking all these questions this evening. From two weeks ago, the plan has, you know, changed, and I know that two weeks ago you were pretty adamant about not doing the streaming live from the elementary standpoint, and now you've changed your decision, and thank you for that. But I guess my question here is, besides having the two teachers, what, can you go into further detail about how that will happen? Is there technology going to be provided in each classroom that is going to be two-way, that students in-person can see them remote, vice versa? Can you, can you just comment a little bit further on that? My second question is, can you talk a little bit about drop-off and dismissal and how that will happen via three to six feet for the little kiddos? And then lastly, I know we have a couple more weeks, and I know we're in unforeseen circumstance, and it's, you know, it's really unfortunate. But the sub-issue for high school and middle school, do you see that happening here in elementary or any other changes that can occur in the next two weeks that you may be hearing from your counterparts in some of the district meetings that you're having?
Okay, first question, in terms of the virtual component, you know, that is being done, you know, through a laptop device, you know, so, you know, the students who are remote, the teacher will be able to see them on the screen.
They just keep coming up, huh?
And, you know, the camera will capture what's going on. And I do believe that the change is really what's made it a workable model is really the addition of that additional support person in the classroom to assist the teacher. In terms of the drop-off, those directions will come, because they differ from building to building, so as part of the information that the elementary principals will share as part of their welcome-back message to parents, you'll receive information about how the drop-off will work at your particular school. Again, the never, I can't ever say never. If someone had told me what things would look like now back in, you know, May, I couldn't have envisioned that. So I don't know if there are other changes down the road. I don't anticipate that there will be any additional changes before the opening of school, but I can't, I can't guarantee that.
Okay, Dr. Rafter, but do you think there's going to be a sub-issue? How there is one for high school and middle school?
I don't anticipate, I don't anticipate that problem at the elementary school.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Jake Cassidy.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm so sorry. Thank you so much for taking my call. I was looking for an update with the marching band. Has it been approved? Has the director?
Yes, it was, and I, I just made that pronouncement at the beginning of the meeting. We did approve the marching band.
I apologize, I've been here since the beginning. I heard something about the marching band, but I didn't, I didn't hear that. So he has been.
It was approved.
So we can start again?
Well, you'll need to have those conversations with Mr. Fleishman and the band directors in terms of, you know, the timeline for getting that started, but, you know, the advisors have been approved.
Thank you very much. I think it's.
Ladies and gentlemen, we have four more people that have signed up, and I'm going to take those four, and then we're going to go back in the board and discuss the issue. And then we will take a vote on this one.
Okay, Robert Van Leeve.
He spoke before, didn't he?
No, we called on him, he was not able to speak.
Come, Robert, welcome.
Robert, are you muted?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, I, I, so I'd just like to know what precautions the food service is taking for these kids if they ever do go back?
You know, we, right at the current point in time are not having any food service take place in the buildings, but our food service management company is set up when we do return to lunch service, you know, to have those appropriate protocols, but that's not something that's included in our plan at the point, at this point, since we're not offering meal service.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome, thank you, Robert.
Judy Godhelf.
Judy? Hey there, Judy.
Hi, everybody, how are you? First, just a few things. I'd like to thank Aiden for speaking up before for his mom, because Aiden, you really took the words right out of my mouth. I was getting the feeling in this meeting that there were parents, I know this is such a stressful situation, but I was getting the feeling that there were parents who were, we were being pitted, parents against staff, and I don't think that that is at all necessary. I want parents to please understand, as teachers, we want to be back in our classrooms under the safest conditions. We want to teach our kids, we want to be there with our kids, but at this particular point, we can't be, and who's to, you know, who knows what's going to happen moving forward? As far as somebody said something about last year, it was terrible, blah, 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 you know, we all did the best we could, just like you guys are doing the best you can to come up with a plan. As educators, we did the best we could, and we, we were kind of thrown into it, kind of unbeknownst to any of us. We went into this virtual situation and we worked really hard. Were there some people who didn't? I have no idea. But I know that I can speak on behalf of myself and my colleagues at Lazar that we worked our butts off. And I do feel badly for any of the elementary parents or the elementary teachers actually who are very stressed about going back to school. And I'm assuming that we are going to, if anything changes as far as, you know, COVID protocol or any other, you know, if the numbers are going up, I'm assuming that we will have to wait for the governor to give us the, okay, nobody's going back to school if that happens. Am I correct, Renee?
Well, not necessarily, Judy, because the Department of Health actually did issue guidelines that give us parameters based on outbreaks that may occur, and that information, you know, would give us guidelines in terms of possible scenarios when we might need to close for a period of time.
Okay.
Judy.
Yes, dear.
I, we've listened, we got a couple more speakers.
Okay.
Can you wrap it up for us?
Yeah, I can finish. I just want to say that this, that this year is not ideal for anyone. It's not ideal for the teachers, it's not ideal for the parents, virtual's not ideal, hybrid is not ideal, nothing is ideal. But what, what we really need to do is we need to set a positive tone, we need to go with what our Board of Education is saying, we need to have your backs, you need to have our backs, and we will get through this together. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Judy.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Judy. Fran?
Hello, can you hear me? Oh, oh, hi, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yeah, Fran, we hear you.
Okay, great.
Yes, Fran.
Thank you so much. I just have one thing I'd like to ask. Everyone keeps talking about the need for substitutes, which I completely understand. However, I really don't know what the process is, and my concern is at the upper levels with the advanced classes, we need a certain caliber of substitute. You know, even with an advanced degree, I don't think I would be capable of doing an advanced science class or even an AP math class. So what is the process and/or the streaming process to make sure we get a qualified teacher as opposed to a warm body?
Well, Fran, the need for the substitute is really to be able to provide supervision in the classroom because the instruction will be coming in from a teacher who is teaching remotely. So the subject matter expertise we have, it's those teachers that we're accommodating by allowing them to teach remotely, but we need, we need a presence, we need a qualified substitute who does not necessarily need the subject matter expertise to be in the classroom with those students who are in-person students.
But please stop. So please stop in to the board up and pick up an application. Okay, Fran?
Thank you very much.
Okay. Bye-bye now.
Um, Melissa Matarazzo.
Hello, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Um, so I just wanted to commend this board, um, and the reopening committee for all of their hard work and putting a plan together for our children. I just, I know how much time and effort it takes, and I just want you to know that it's much appreciated. Um, I have personally chosen to keep my first grader home for the first trimester. And the biggest issue I had was that, um, we're allowing three to six feet distancing on the elementary level. Um, as far as I'm concerned, six feet should be the minimum in each classroom. So I'm just, and based on what you're saying tonight, I'm assuming this plan won't be modified and that we're content with three feet. Um, I just, you know, in order for me to even entertain the idea of sending my daughter back, that would have to be changed. So I just wanted to put that out there. Um, to add to this, I'm just not impressed with the reasoning provided, um, about the middle school and the high school going to remote instruction. I, I, I have to echo some of the statements that have been, um, put out here that basically we're now putting the staff in the front line here of the reason as to why those two buildings are going into remote instruction. Um, and, you know, earlier it was stated that as soon as we just get more bodies, um, this will all disappear. Well, that's an issue as well. You know, now you're talking about our teachers like they're dispensable. Um, and maybe that's why they are taking their own fate into their own hands and going on leaves or asking for accommodations. And so I just, I respectfully request that we just recognize that this pandemic is the reason we need to go remote for Lazar and the high school, not because of the staff needing accommodations. Um,
Okay.
Along with that, I just, I don't, hiring just bodies or signing people up, as was stated, is also not acceptable, because as stated earlier, we have AP classes, we have, the, the rigor in high school is something that we can't just have any Joe walk in and start teaching. So this should not be something that's rushed, and I know that that's something that you are all considering as well. And lastly,
Yeah, I think Melissa, Melissa Renee explained it a few
I just want to make sure that you know that we're not talking about the substitutes teaching. The substitutes are there to provide supervision for the students who are in person, who will be taught by their teacher who is teaching remotely from home. The teachers that we have had for years, teaching our AP courses. It's the same teachers. We just, they're not coming into the building, but we need an adult to be able to supervise the students in the building.
We need a certified teacher in the building, Melissa. They will not be teaching the advanced calculus. They'll be there as a certified teacher in the building, which is required by law.
Okay.
Okay, so we're not asking them to do that, all right?
Thank you.
But thank you very much.
And just to conclude, um, I just wanted to also comment that educators are working hard for this fall. And, um, I just, the demeaning comments about having people, having the teachers work from home is not a day off, um, is just unacceptable. And I just really hope that the general public changes their tune about our teachers, because now I feel it's putting them in a place to just kind of be the ones to take the brunt of why the middle school and the high school are going remote. Um, teachers are
And Miss Lee, you, Melissa, you did not hear these statements from the board or the administration.
Yes.
That came from other members who spoke tonight. So let's, I, I think we have to make that clear. That is not the way we think of our professional staff or any staff member in that game, but thank you for your comments. All right, we're down to two or three more, and that's it.
We have three left, but these people have all been heard from before.
All right, the other, um, let's make it three you've already heard, so I'd like to get out of here. We said nine-thirty when we're almost there, but let's hear the last three, and then we have a, a one other person that I said would be the last speaker. I don't know if she's still with us.
Okay, Kathleen Colotrella.
Uh, yes, hi, can you hear me? Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just want, I just want to confirm the sports. Uh, I think someone did ask the question before that the fall sports are still, uh, planned to occur. Is that correct?
Even, even though the high school will be full-time remote, unless there is a change from the NJSIAA, we will continue to run the fall sports program.
Okay.
Without delays?
Without delays?
Yeah, in other words, they're going to start just as if we were, uh, starting the, the new year. Is that correct?
Whatever, they're
Well, the NJSIAA has very specific guidelines. Practice doesn't start until September fourteenth.
But we've already had the people out there practicing with their coaches. There'll be a two-week hiatus from August twenty-eighth through the fourteenth. And NJSSIAA, from what I understand as of today, is moving ahead, and that's where we are. They could change their mind tomorrow too, but I doubt it. All right?
Okay, thank you.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Colotrella.
Okay, I, I think we need to indicate that we're not taking any additional people with the hands up.
There's no additional calls after we said the last three.
Well, Angela, Angela Survey?
Yes, hi, can
Yeah.
Hi, I'm
Yep.
Hi, I, I just wanted to just say, um, I really do appreciate what the teachers have been doing. And, um, my kids did phenomenal distant learning this past. Uh, my other son's out of district. There's, I was going to keep him home regardless. Um, but they're in school also just changed two days ago to remote only, because it is a dynamic of, you know, teachers are parents as well. There are situations that change at home. Um, so I really think there needs to be a lot more support for the teachers from the parents, um, because like I said, they are, they're aunts, uncles, they're, they're, they're in this as well with us. It's not just a job. They're also a person and a human being, so just wanted to thank everybody.
Thank you, Angela.
Appreciate that.
Appreciate it.
Uh, Addie Sabat?
Hi, I just wanted to, I guess, revisit the question while we were between, between the time that I asked it initially and now, a lot of people that have, you know, been listening online have been sending me private messages, and this is a concern for many, many parents. We would like a reason as to why there are, the, they're going to be going back to school for half-days during the virtual learning. I still have not heard a good reason.
Well, Addie, I'm, you know, this is our plan. Um, this is what we had put forth. We're hoping to be able to get in-person learning, uh, going as quickly as possible.
But my, my question is why? Why was a decision made as such?
Just, Addie, I have to tell you that the decision to go full-time remote at the high school and the middle school was made today.
That's fine that it was made today, but why was it made as such that the kids will be going half-day? I really want an answer for that.
Like, all I can tell you is we are following the plan that was submitted to the State Department of Education. Is there a possibility for
Did the state tell you to have us go half-day?
This was the one approved, Abby, this was approved by the board on August eighth. That was the one that was submitted to the state. That's when we, excuse me, that's when we met for about four hours on a Saturday morning and listened to many, many people. The only thing that's changed between that plan and tonight, basically, is the problem that we can't get enough coverage for classes at the high school and the middle school.
But my question is still not being answered. Is there no answer?
I don't know, I, I don't know if you were at the meeting on the eighth.
I don't think it matters. I'm asking for the answer, and why is there no answer? Do you not have an answer?
There is an answer. That's what, what, what answer? The district has come up, the administration
A lot of people, the taxpayers want an answer as to why.
Well, I think Dr. Rovatar has indicated that the administration has met. We had a long-range committee meeting of the group. This is what the administrators came up with, and this is what the recommendation is to the board as the best way to move forward at the present time. To be quite truthful, I don't know of many districts that are going full-time in-person.
That decision to go half-day was when we were planning to have the kids in school and we were on a hybrid schedule. Right now, until October thirtieth, that's a long period. That's all of September and all of October. They're going to potentially be virtual. Why is it half-day virtual? Why was the plan not changed?
Charlie, can I say something? It's Michelle.
Sure.
Sure, I didn't see you. I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry. I, and I don't mean to interrupt, but, um, you know, we just found out about this today, as the parents did. I, I, in thinking about this, this is, I, I do think that there are probably a lot of logistical reasons that the schedule has been set and so forth, but given that this is a change to what we anticipated being the plan, I, I just wonder if it's worth looking at this as a possibility. And I just would like to kind of throw that out there. I certainly don't think anything could be answered today. But I wonder if it's just, you know, worth visiting it.
Thank you, Michelle. That's exactly what I was asking.
What did she say? I missed that. Could you repeat that, Michelle? I'm sorry.
No, that it's, that it's, it's worth taking a look at, and certainly I, we can, we can, uh, have those conversations with Mr. Sanford. I am not going to speak on behalf of Mr. Sanford, who has worked very hard with his, his own district, uh, his own building reopening committee, uh, to put together their plan and their schedule. I'm, I'm not in a position to change that on his behalf. And the same thing would go. I know the middle school has also had their own committee and they have worked through this. So again, we, you know, this is not the kind of thing that we can pivot on a dime and, and make these kinds of changes. You know, can we look at it? Absolutely. But can I commit that there would be a change? I can't, I cannot do that at this point in time.
Dr. Rovatar, just want to point out that I think Mrs. Woodring was trying to indicate that she'd like to speak to this topic.
Oh, by all means, Andrea.
Sure. I, I think that the misunderstanding lies in the fact that we're doing a synchronous schedule. So that means that kids will be on with their teacher for that four and a half hours. However, the understanding is that there's going to be offline work that students will be expected to do. Um, and that will be in addition to homework, which would just be regular homework. So in a model that we're using, um, in a model that will be K to twelve, there will be the expectation that students will be doing some offline readings, um, could be watching, you know, um, from various sources, videos, um, there, there's a plethora. You know, students will still have textbooks available to them, and there'll be some substantial work that they will have to do. And then they will have the teachers there for that, you know, four and a half hours to walk them through that. So whether, even though the, the in-person, the face-to-face with the teachers may be a half the day, the expectation is that the students will be, you know, working pretty close to a, a full school day, with the understanding that, you know, somebody can't sustain six hours looking at a computer. So the teachers know that, and they balance that with different activities and resources um, to give, you know, the kids a break, and, and just like a regular school day, there's multiple activities going on in the classroom. The teach, the, the students are not staring at the teacher lecturing to them every single period for a full school day.
Thank you, Andrea.
Hi, classroom, thank you. I have one question. Four, half, half-days, four hours. How much instructional time is there in a full day normally?
I, I, Mike, I can't tell you off the top of my head. I know there's, what, a fifty, fifty-minute lunch period that's involved in that?
I mean, the point I was trying to make is that it's not really a half-day.
Mike, we'll get that information for you. They don't have it right off the top of their head. Okay?
Just trying to make a point. These were, it's not really a half-day.
Okay.
All right, so the, so the last comment that we had that had gone in, uh, under the, uh, under the wire, uh, David Honeck.
David?
Dr. Rov, you hear me? Hello?
Yeah.
Oh, hi, I'm, I'm calling again. Thank, thank you very much for taking us. I'm going to be very quick. I know everybody wants to get home. Um, but you mentioned earlier, and this is not settling well with me right now, is that you're going to reassess the situation on October fifteenth, and you need nineteen, uh, uh, you know, substitute teachers. But it also takes eight weeks to get certificate, uh, certi- uh, certification, uh, from, uh, Morris County. That
Up to eight, up to eight. Up to eight weeks.
Okay, so, so let's say, let's say if it's six weeks, that leaves us two weeks to get nineteen people. Are, are we being realistic with ourselves here that we're going to be able to hit the goal of nineteen? Even if we had the applicants and, and two, and I want to be very clear on this one. Dr. Rovatar, do you have an application landing page where the community, community could come together, use their social community, and start sharing out to everybody that we need qualified people? So we could start bringing in applicants as a community?
I, I would, I would say the Montville Moms is probably, uh, a very effective place to have that conversation.
No, 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 but, but, but no, no, I don't think you understand what I'm saying. A landing page that, that could take applicants that we could use our social communities, not just internally in Montville Moms, externally to everybody that we know in New Jersey and New York that have children, that have the credits available, that might be looking for a job, that we could send them to, to, to apply for a job, and then you and your team can actually review.
Yep, and that is already all set up on our website. We have, you know, if you look for employment, uh, click on that, it will take you to our Appletrack, uh, platform that allows people to, uh, submit information online.
And getting back to my original, okay, thank you, and I'm, I'll definitely use that and urge everybody else to use it. Wait, getting back to my original question. Is it viable that October fifteenth, when you reassess that based on the six-day week to get a certificate, that this is, I mean, we're being, uh, honest with ourselves, or are we going to come back October fifteenth and, and
I think we're trying, I think we're being honest.
I, I am very honest, and I think, I think it is doable if there are people out there. Someone who currently, you know, we have a lot of, uh, folks out there that are former teachers, that are certified teachers, that's a very easy process for them to come in and be able to serve as substitutes. Um, that doesn't require any additional certificate to be issued. Um, if, if people are hearing about this information and they can apply this week, then it is very likely that all of that processing will be completed by October fifteenth. Um, you know, to allow us to return to in-person instruction. If, if we can get the people that come forth and apply, I, I think the timeframe is very reasonable.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, and have a good evening.
I had, thank you. I had one, this is it. We have no more. I had one woman
Three other people, but we've already heard from them all.
Oh, I said Mrs., is Mrs. Castellano one of them?
No.
No? I said Mrs. Castellano at the end of the meeting. I guess she decided not to hang around. Okay. Bringing it back to the board, we do have resolution, Resolution J six. We've had quite a lengthy, almost forty people have spoke. Uh, board members, citizens, administrators. There was a motion on the floor, and it was second with the Resolution J seven. Any board members want to discuss it any further before we take a roll call vote? I can't see everybody's hand. So if anybody sees somebody's hand.
I don't see anybody with it.
I don't see anybody's hand either. All right, uh, Christine, can you take the roll call vote, please?
Mr. O'Brien?
Aye.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Dr. Cortelino?
Yes.
Mr. Daughtry?
Yes.
Mrs. Sano?
Yes.
Dr. Modra?
Yes.
Mr. Rappaport?
Yes.
Ms. Zuckerman?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes. Sure, any other public participation? Any other board member questions, general board comments, new business? Anything before we entertain a motion to adjourn?
I do try
All right, motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Pardon?
do they stay there the rest of the day?
All of above.
Uh, all of the above, I mean, they have the option of saying, uh, after student dismissal, um, uh, that's an option, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Can we continue with the roll call, Mrs. Slunt?
I think we're doing a motion to adjourn.
I'm sorry?
A motion to adjourn?
Excuse me, a motion to adjourn? We have a motion second?
No, not yet.
Can we have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Yes.
All in favor, aye, all who are not in favor of returning that would like to stick around? Is there anyone there? Okay, thank you, Mark, thank you very much for your help. Thank you, Austin. Can we disconnect?